I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
You have one minute.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here for the last time.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
The first item is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, April 17th, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. Any petitions and communications? I haven't received anything from anyone. Is there anyone who would like to address the old city council? Oh, Danielle.
Sorry, we had a Pokemon emergency, so I couldn't fill a slip out. I'll give one to you. I just wanted to thank Laurel Pressing for your service. You were the first mayor of Urbana, first female mayor. And after your distinguished tenure, we had three women running for mayor. And I think that you helped really break through the glass ceiling. You helped to bring together the council and the mayor's position. And in what had been quite a number of years of kind of feuding and antagonism between those bodies. And I think that helped to allow the council to set goals and move forward in a reasonable way and make progress in the city. And you pretty much have always said it like it is, whether people like to hear it or not. And I appreciate that about you. So I just wanted to say thank you for your service. I know this kind of service with the council members and the mayor, but particularly the mayor in the hot seat is often a thankless position. And you have served the people of Urbana with distinction. I also want to thank Phyllis Clark, our city clerk. It is, for those who have not been on city council, the number of pieces of papers that you actually have to manage as a council member and as clerk managing that for all the council is overwhelming, actually. And the fact that when I served on council, I always got my packet on time. It had everything in it. I was able, you helped keep us organized as council members, which is really important, given that we also had jobs and were working and parents and things like that. I also appreciated how you took care of council members. I broke my leg at one point and came to council the day after I broke my leg for a very important vote to expand the library. And you helped hobble me out and into the car. And there was a meeting going on at the time for which you were the parliamentarian, but you understood that sometimes people need support. And I appreciate the support that you gave me when I was on city council. So I hope you enjoy your retirement. I want to just appreciate the outgoing council members and to express to you all my excitement in being able to work with those who stay on. Looking forward to working with you all to serve the poorest of the poor in Urbana. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Danielle. We appreciate what you did on the first council that I was on and establishing the Public Arts Commission and all those good works. And so, welcome back as the new township supervisor.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I have two people that want to have a statement here. First is Bishop King James Underwood. Bishop King James Underwood, and he does not wish to speak, but he's concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision. And Elderess Melinda Carr continues her concern about the Ellis subdivision, but does not wish to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, one more person.
This is about...
Carol McUsick, welcome back. We haven't seen you for quite a while.
Thank you. This is about the idea that the city government could do something about air quality. The one thing I learned when I... A very, a big truck surrounded by blue smoke went past me at an intersection. I couldn't see the number on the truck, but I called the state I E P A. That's Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Field Office. In Urbana, they have one for health and one for environment. And I'm not sure which I ended up in with that call. But the people in the office there, they informed me that in the, like, Chicago area and St. Louis area, vehicles, like, private vehicles, even, not just trucks, but they have to, not just company trucks, but private individuals have to have admissions testing. You know, that seems to be the case around the big metropolitan areas, but it's not downstate. And I thought that's the same thing all over again of how dumps near big cities have less regulation than out in the hinterland. So that doesn't seem right to me, actually. And since the, what kinds of legislation there could be, like, for idling, like, idling... Okay, idling is related to how bad, how good the tune-up of the vehicle is because how much of an issue it is for them to be idling. But I pass Water Street all the time, and the buses are sitting empty, you know, getting ready to be available, I guess. But I'm not sure that they, you know, even if it's inclement weather and the driver has to have the engine on to stay warm, I'm not sure that they, like, for example, help the people in the street who are cold or miserable, you know, like, have a place to sit. And, you know, for our own community, we could, it could be complicated to legislate idling because people have lots of different reasons for idling. It would be very complicated to... But you could also just develop people's kind of ethic about it. So there's more peer pressure to bear. But I found, I'd like to give it to someone, I know you can't get things put into the record, but I'm going to give it to the people I think are the most abusive at this point, which is going to be...
Why don't you give it to the clerk?
No, I want to give it to individuals, really, because there is no such thing as being... I'm sorry, it was disrespectful that way I said that. But I do feel that if, when you give, I'm not clear, when you give papers to the clerk, how it's reflected in the public...
Well, she can pass it to whoever you want, is what I was going to say.
Charlie, and then Ben Roberts, I guess? Oh, maybe I'll call it Joe Brown.
Charlie's a has-been.
It's about, there's a piece in the New York Times about how 6.5 million rights people die from air pollution every year. I thought that was pretty staggering.
Okay, thank you very much. Charlie, you want to say something?
Yes. Having served as city council member for 16 years, I want to thank my colleagues and the public for the support and the good wishes as I slide over here in a few minutes. A couple of things I wanted to lay out here. I'm most proud of the mayor council goals that we worked on every four years, revising that set, setting goals, and then getting them done. And I hope that the next council follows that tradition. I think it's been really very, very useful. There are some goals that we didn't do as well as we wanted. There are goals we surpassed. There are goals that we hit right on the mark. Something I've kept in front of my dresser that I can see every morning is a quote from Dennis Whately. He's a motivational speaker. And he says, "The reason most people never reach their goals is that they don't define them or even seriously consider them as believable or achievable. Winners can tell you where they are going, what they plan to do along the way, and who will be sharing the adventure with them." So I urge the new council to share that adventure with each other and come up with another set of goals. One goal that we achieved was becoming a gold bike-friendly community, bike-friendly status community. And so, I would be remiss if I didn't remind everybody that May is Bike Month and that tomorrow is Bike to Work Day. So please ride your bike. There are eight or nine different work stations. And you can find out more at cu-bike-month.org. There's one goal that I never really got as far along as I would like. It's one of the incomplete ones for me, and that's protecting the night sky. So I'm passing around to council members, and I urge you to leave one behind for the new council members, some calendars and some information from the International Dark Sky Association. We are destroying our night sky. Many people don't have a clue what's up there because they can't see it. It's especially bad in big cities. But even here in Urbana and Champaign, you can't look up and see the Milky Way anymore. You could 20 years ago, and now you can't. It's a real shame that we don't have that ability. So I urge the next council to take a look at what else we can do with respect to the night sky. And on that note, thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Okay. Abdul Hakim Salam.
Good evening. I'm Abdul Hakim Salam. I'm at 1907 Shelley Court. What I'd like to do is thank the council for the work that you've done. And in particular, in passing the Day of Gratitude that we have in our city, both here and Champaign. And we are celebrating our second annual celebration this year at the Urbana Civic Center. It's going to be on the 25th, and you are all cordially invited. You get formal invitations as well. But I want to thank you for all your support, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we will move on. Unfinished business. I don't think we have any unfinished business that we're going to do today. But getting back to communications, there was an article about the budget deal that was put together in Congress, and any retribution against sanctuary cities was dropped. So that's good news. Okay, we'll move on to reports of standing committees, committee of the whole. Diane Marlin. Oh, you want to say something?
Yes, I did. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I was trying to go last, Mike. I certainly want to say to the outgoing council members, well, I guess there's only two, right? Yeah. Mike and Diane's moving into the hot seat. So she... And Charlie. But one of the things that I have found in the couple of years that I've been here since the mayor appointed me and you guys voted me on, I have held true to my antagonistic ways, and you have all learned so much from it. I appreciate that. But Mike, you know, I'm sure I'll see you at Hickory River, but I appreciate your passion, you sticking to your beliefs and to your guns and sharing some of the things that you've shared. And I've learned some things from you. I just wanted to make sure that I say that to you and thank you publicly for your service. Because whether or not we all agree, it's very difficult to get people to get involved in public service, to serve on councils, and especially when you're not getting paid a bunch of money at all to be here. So it's a sacrifice. It's a commitment, and it shows how much you care about the community. And I thank you for your service. I thank you for your service as a businessman in our community. And so, just wanted to say thank you for your service. And Charlie, of course, we've had several conversations, and I'm glad that I can bike just about anywhere I want to. Although I don't bike, I could if I wanted to. But I'll try tomorrow. If it's not raining, I'm in. And I'm sure I'll be, you know, pulling on your coattails to find some, to learn more from you as you move over to the city clerk position. But I thank you as well for your sacrifices and all your families because it's not easy when you're gone. I know Mike's trying to get out of it. He's got to get somewhere soon. But it really is a commitment because everybody, everyone is sitting in this seat with you when you have a family at home. And I thank you all for that, and I thank your families for it as well. But Mayor Pressing, for you in particular, I have learned a lot from you. And sometimes when you end the fight, you don't always appreciate that aspect of a person. But your stick-to-it-ness and not being bullied, I think, is extremely important. And I'm very anxious to see how things turn out with this decision with Carl and stuff. But I think you did the right thing. I appreciate that. I think the taxpayers of Urbana appreciate that. And from an auditor to state rep to the mayor, the various different things that you've done in public office, I think you have to be commended for that. And I thank you for your service and your sacrifice as well.
Thank you all. I really enjoyed working with the city councils that we've had. I think this is a real good example of democracy. And when Aaron Ammons and Mike Madigan agree, it gets really scary. I think we've gotten a lot done, and I wish the best to Diane and to Charlie as the new clerk and the incoming council members who have been doing their homework. And I'm sure they're all going to do a really good job. So thank you for that. Okay, we'll move on to reports of standing committees. Diane Marlin, committee of the whole.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move resolution number 2017-04-022, resolution approving a letter of intent agreement at IDOT US 45 Cunningham Avenue to provide the shared use path from Kenyon Road to Napleton Way.
Second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
I move resolution number 2017-04-023R, which is a resolution approving the Champaign-Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System Annual Budget.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan? Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of resolution number 2017-04-024R, which is a resolution approving the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium Fiscal Year 2017-2018 Annual Action Plan.
I'll second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion?
Just as a point of clarification, the title on the agenda is going to be the actual title of the final version of the resolution. Does not match what's in the packet. But just wanted to point that out, that the title on the agenda is going to match the final resolution. Sorry about that.
So what is the difference?
Just verbiage. The verbiage was different, and they will be made to match in the final version.
Okay, so will it be what's on the agenda?
Yes, what's on the agenda. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you. Okay. We have a motion?
And a seconded.
And a seconded. Okay. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of resolution number 2017-04-025R, resolution approving modifications to the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium Fiscal Year 2014-15, Fiscal Year 2015-16 Annual Action Plans.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of resolution number 2017-04-026R, which is a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the village of Rantoul regarding management of community development block grant funds.
I'll second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And I move approval of resolution number 2017-04-027R, resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the village of Rantoul regarding a land bank feasibility study.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Ammons?
Yes, I just, I need a definition for every word in this resolution just so that it's not as easy to go out that easy.
You're killing me, man.
No, I'm good.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. And I forgot, we have another presentation, and that is to Mike Madigan. It's a surprise.
It's a bucket of coleslaw. Texas tater.
With no meat.
That's right.
So I got the email saying, hey, we make a street sign for everybody who retires. What do you want it to say? And I thought, heck, I don't know. So I Googled possible street sign designations. And I'm rolling through it, and I'm thinking, okay, I came to Dead End Road. I thought, yeah, there are probably several people who would like that. Then I came to Madigan Hollow. Yeah, a few people might like that. But then I thought, oh, Madigan Way is appropriate because I never get mine.
But you're a good sport, though.
I appreciate it. So that's how we ended up. But in all truthfulness and seriousness, I want to say I have enjoyed my time here. I think everybody ought to be involved in public service in some way, shape, or form in their lives. I obviously don't think it ought to be a career, or else I would have run again. But I do think that it is important to be involved. And one thing that I will say honestly is that I think we all have the same goal up here. We all love Urbana. My wife and I moved back home from Springfield, after 20 years in Springfield, back to this area about a little over 10 years ago. And we love the community. We really do. So I think we all have the same goals in mind. We just have a different idea about how to get there. And so, I appreciate folks tolerating my views for the last four years. And I wish the new city council all the best and the new mayor all the best. And I just want to sincerely thank all of you folks up here for your advice and counsel over the last four years. And I, in fact, learned a whole lot from every single person up here. Because it's important that we keep moving forward. So don't want to belabor it. Let's get on to the new folks. And thank you all so much for your service and for your friendship.
Well, I thought we were going to have two agendas, but I see it moves here to oaths of office. So I guess that the people who are leaving should...
Mayor, can I add item G to this?
Okay, go ahead.
unofficially.
Before we move to the new council, I wanted to express my appreciation and thanks to Mayor Pressing. And while these flowers will wilt in a few days, the vase has been engraved with the logo from the City of Urbana, and it says "Mayor," so it's going to last.
Thank you so much!
So how does this work?
So how do you want to do this, Madam Clerk?
Well, I give a chance to talk. You have one minute. Repeat after me, please. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Charlie Smythe.
Having been elected to the office of city clerk...
Having been elected to the office of city clerk.
...in the city of Urbana...
In the city of Urbana.
...in the county of Champaign, Illinois, aforesaid...
In the county of Champaign, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
...of the office of city clerk to the best of my ability.
Of the office of city clerk to the best of my ability.
Thank you so much.
Please repeat. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Diane Marlin.
Having been elected to the office of mayor...
Having been elected to the office of mayor...
...in the city of Urbana in the county of Champaign...
In the city of Urbana, county of Champaign...
Illinois aforesaid.
Illinois aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the office of mayor to the best of my ability.
Of the office of mayor to the best of my ability.
Your council member should step forward.
Please rise. We'll do this as a group. Well, on that note... State aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Eric Jacobson.
Having been elected to the office...
Having been elected to the office...
...of city council, man or woman...
Of city council, man or woman.
You need to choose. In the city of Urbana...
In the city of Urbana.
...in the county of Champaign, Illinois...
In the county of Champaign, Illinois.
...aforesaid.
Aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of city council men or women.
Of city council men.
To the best of my ability. I guess we don't say "Madam Clerk" anymore, we say, "Mr. Clerk." Are you ready?
Yes, I am. Let me warm up here. You have one minute.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Hazen.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here. Are there any reports of officers? Libby Tyler.
Good evening. On your dais tonight are two annual reports. These are calendar year reports, the last two from community development, one from the building safety division, and one from the planning division, and these will be placed on the website. Also, Mayor Pressing had asked for a quick update on the Urbana Landmark Hotel. It's still a work in progress. The developer is working with the folks from Hilton on the property improvement plan, and staff are working on the development agreement, the draft. We've received comments back from the developer and are then responding back to those comments. Additionally, as discussed the last time, this came before the council, we've asked Espy Friedman, who are development advisors, to complete a full report, and so they're working on that as well. So we expect to be able to come back with further information and updates in coming weeks.
Thank you. Any questions for Libby? Okay, thank you. Under new business, we have two presentations. The first is from Xenia. Maria Alanis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria Alanis, and my colleague, Carolina Grant, is right back there. We met with Mayor Pressing, and she advised us to come in and address the new council about what Ms. Grant and I are doing. We have started a grassroots nonprofit organization, Xenia, and I wanted to just share a few things with you about Xenia, if I may, and I know I only have five minutes. Xenia is about creating a, we have created a grassroots nonprofit organization. Our Articles of Incorporation as a nonprofit organization with Illinois have been approved. We believe in community outreach, support, engagement, but more importantly, we're not here to compete with any other NPOs. We believe that it takes more than just events or workshops, it's about trust and relationships. There are four components for Xenia: culture, empowerment, leadership, and learning. I have hard copies of a PowerPoint that I will leave with you, but just to share very briefly, part of our culture piece is that we want to create a culture, an acculturation co-op, being that Champaign County residents can learn about immigrants' cultures, and immigrants can learn about the culture of Champaign County residents. We are about bridging communication. Oftentimes, people that need the services that are offered here in Champaign County, they, they are not reaching the people that need them the most. We have a lot of great services here. So think of Xenia as like the bridge to connect those that want to provide services or volunteer, and those that need that support. We're about empowering people and creating leaders in them. Also, you know, we are going to also support the community, not only with English as a second language classes, but also with Spanish classes and French classes, because we have a very large Spanish-speaking and French-speaking community here in Champaign County. So if I may, approach the city clerk and just leave this information, and thank you very much for letting me share this with you.
And we have a second presentation on the fire recruitment plan.
Hello. I'm Brian Nightlinger, the fire chief for the Urbana Fire Department, and we're going to present tonight on Urbana firefighter recruiting for 2017. We've been actively involved for a while now in the recruiting process, and also presenting with me is Elizabeth Borman, our Assistant Human Resources Manager and Engineer, Paramedic, Rhonda Foster. And additionally, Rhonda is a hazmat technician, a technical rescue technician, a car seat installation technician, and CPR instructor. So you can see, Rhonda's quite involved in the fire department, and she has agreed to take an active part in our recruiting process. So Rhonda's going to start out the presentation.
Thanks, Chief, and welcome, and thank you for having us. So the things that we are going to cover briefly is who we're looking for for the Urbana Fire Department, what the UFD offers, when and where the selection process and what it entails, and then why it matters, the recruitment process. So who are we looking for? We're looking for people who can get along with others and work as a team, we're looking for collaborators, people who are tech savvy, well-educated, both formal and informal, people who are diverse in every sense of, of the word, and those who are socially conscious and want to make a difference. Basically, we're targeting what we would call the millennial generation, or Generation Y, those who are between 21 and 35 years of age. What is important to them? Their career priorities are pay and benefits. They want a flexible schedule, they want to have advancement in their career, they want to be developed professionally, and they want to make a difference, which is most important to them and their generation. So based on those things, what can we, as an Urbana Fire Department, offer them? We have very flexible scheduling, we work 24 hours on, we're off for 48. We have vacation time, we have trade time, so we do have a lot of flexibility in our scheduling. We have a very healthy pay and benefit package. Our benefits are second to none for the city. We have continuous education, both as they start their career and throughout the entire process. So we will continue to educate them up to the level that they really want. There's lots of opportunity for them. Their career ladder is really as high as they want to go. Most importantly, to them and to us, we have the opportunity for them to make a difference. This picture was taken, just kind of a rare day in the life of a firefighter. This group of firefighters went from a working structure fire, where they suppressed a fire and did search and rescue. They briefly got back in quarters, they came back, they were able to do an ICE rescue here in the city of Urbana, and then further went on to provide lifesaving efforts for someone who was in cardiac arrest, and that person was saved. So if you want to ask us, do we make a difference? Absolutely. Every day we're at work. So that's important to the Generation Y, and that's important to us. So I will pass that on to Liz. Thank you.
Good evening. So I'd like to start this next section with a question to each of you. If you had the ability to radically transform someone's life for the better with nothing more than a three-word question, would you do it? Okay, with that in mind, we'll continue on. The qualifications, we're looking for someone who has a high school diploma or equivalent. We're looking for someone who is at least 21 years of age and under 35, this is by Illinois statute, and as you'll see, 35 has an asterisk. That maximum age can be exceeded for people who have experience with the military or who have prior firefighting experience, and we have more information about this on the website. They need to be able to pass the CPAT, this is a physical ability test, and the ladder climb. This, again, is by Illinois statute, and they need to have this completed by late July. And we have more information on our brand-new website, urbancareers.org. So let's talk about the selection process a little bit. The written test is worth 40%. The written test evaluates a number of dimensions: mechanical aptitude, writing, math, reading, and human relations. The interview portion is worth 60%. This is where we're really going to evaluate the soft skills. Soft skills are now so important that the Department of Labor has developed a curriculum for workplace skills for soft skills. The CPAT is a pass/fail. And lastly, preference points. You add all of these up together, and that will give you your rank on the eligibility list. So let's talk about preference points for a minute. By ordinance, people with military experience receive five points for veterans' preference, five points for Urbana residency, four points, up to four points, for EMT licensure, and you'll see this also has an asterisk. People will receive two points if they have EMT basic certification. For those with EMT intermediate and EMT paramedic, they receive the full four points. They receive two points for firefighter certification, four points for education, and three points for volunteer community service. Now, what's interesting about these preference points is that if you look at EMT licensure and firefighter certification, these are directly related to the fire service, obviously. People who have both of those will receive six points. People who have education and associate's degree or higher in any field and volunteer community service will receive up to seven points. Why is that? Well, Chief Nightlinger realizes that people who have a broad array of skills, when you bring them together, they are going to create a very broad foundation of knowledge for the fire department. So we want to bring in people who have fire service skills, but also have chemistry skills and experience and knowledge, people who have building construction experience, psychology, education backgrounds. This department has a huge component for education. We want people who are educators. We want to bring them into the department. Volunteer community service is also very critically important to this department, and people will receive up to three points for their volunteer service. This department is built on service leadership, and we have a number of firefighters in the This department, they understand the importance of service leadership. To be a successful firefighter, one has to be able to get up at 2:00 AM, like firefighter noticed, you have to be able to get up at 2:00 AM on a January evening, go to a fire or an emergency situation, put yourself in danger for a person you've never met. That's the kind of person we're looking for. The eligibility list that we create is good for two years. And now we have some dates. So that question that I asked earlier, the three-word question, is, will you come? Each of you have a pack of cards in front of you. We are asking you to give those cards out to someone you know who may be interested in the fire service. We're having an open house on Saturday, May 13th, at the Urbana Civic Center. 10:00 to noon, people will be able to learn firsthand about the recruitment process. Will you come? That's all you have to ask someone you know who may be interested. If you want more cards, we will get you more cards. June 11th is the deadline to apply by. The test will be on June 24th. We are allowing people to test through the National Testing Network, which means that you do not have to come to Urbana to test. You can test at any location throughout the country, but if you test in Urbana, there is no charge. And now I hand it over to Chief Nightlinger.
Okay, all of this that they've talked about really matters because we're focusing on a very specific recruitment process. We want a recruitment process that's going to bring our department in, in a position where it's reflective of our city. It's going to be reflective of the race, education levels, previous occupations, reflective of everybody that lives in the city. And so that's why we have to be so deliberate in the recruitment process. We want to keep up with changes in society. As society changes, we want our department to reflect that, and we want to attract the best and the brightest people in the city of Urbana. And so we're out there trying to recruit, and we're letting people know that, that we would want them to be a part of our team. And we want to continue, most of all, to provide high-quality services to the citizens. I mean, our citizenry enjoyed a very high quality of service through the hazmat, the technical rescue, the firefighting skills. The prevention in this city is awesome, and so we want to continue that level of service. Okay, the tactical initiatives, our tactical initiatives are what we're doing right now for this recruitment process that's coming up this summer, and this testing process. A few of the things that we've done, we had a community leaders breakfast on February 23rd, and we invited community leaders from all over the cities of Champaign and Urbana to tell them that we need their help in recruiting firefighters. We need them to spread the word, and we need them to be our recruiters, because the people in a community know other people in a community who, who want to serve, and who have the abilities and, and who want to serve. We make personal contacts. I and the firefighters always make personal contacts of people who want to be firefighters, because somebody wants to be a firefighter, when they see a firefighter, that's the first thing they'll talk about. And so we've also encouraged other people in the community to make these personal contacts. Again, I want to direct everybody to the website that Liz was talking about, it's the urbancareers.org. There's a lot of information on that website for people that want to be a firefighter or think they may want to be a firefighter, so that's why she stood this website up. We're doing a lot of ads in a lot of different places. We've been on radio. If you see the picture on the PowerPoint, we've got three different posters that are going around on the MTD buses, okay? Additionally, we've got stuff on UP TV, and we're really heavy in social media through this recruitment process to try to bring in that age group of people that we want to test. On May 13th, as Liz says, we're going to have the open house, and we're going to have firefighters there, so folks coming in can, can meet some firefighters, they can look at the apparatus. We're going to have about an hour of formal presentation that's going to cover every aspect of the recruitment process. And then we're going to follow up with information on the written test, on the oral interview process, and we're going to try to supply as much information as we can to the candidates. Okay, our strategic initiatives, this is the long term. We're not only focusing on two... We're not only focusing on 2017, we test every two years, so we're focusing on the 2019 to 2021, and we want to encourage candidates to... that if they test and they don't make the list, that they retest. If they test and they're farther down the list where they may get hired, we want them to try again. Most of our firefighters have went through two or three testing processes before they got hired, and that's just the commitment that you have to have to get into public Also, for long term, we... Urbana Fire Department is one of the founding members of the Champaign County Fire Chiefs Association Explorer Post, and the Explorer Post brings kids in. You have to have graduated from the eighth grade through 21 years old into an Explorer Post that does training, they do classroom, they meet at IFSI. We have members on our department that are active in that, so we get kids involved in the process. A lot of... Another thing we do is we refer these kids to the local volunteer fire departments. A lot of the fire departments will take members at 18 years old. These kids can move on to volunteer fire department, start getting some hands-on experience, and prepare to test for Urbana when they're 21. And assigning mentors to the firefighter candidates. We want all of our kids that come into the fire department, and all the people that come into the fire department, to have a mentor to check on them, to check their progress, and encourage them to stay at the process. And finally, I want to talk about the concept of growing our own. As a community, we need to grow our own candidates. We need to grow our own firefighters. I'm a product of a community where I was able to get into a cadet program at 17 years old, and a lot of our firefighters are, is in a small community where people invested in the kids and trained, and I got to participate in a fire department at 17 years old. And that followed with 16 years of volunteer service, and at 32, I became a paid firefighter. My vision is for every kid in Urbana to have that opportunity, so we can grow them into public service, whether it's the fire department or the police department. And what we need is, we need the support of council members, we need the support of families, the schools, the counselors, the churches, the civic organizations, everybody that has a hand at touching kids in our community to encourage them to come into public service. Because, I mean, again, if we want a fire department, if we want a police department that's reflective of our community, then that's what we need to do together. The police department can't do it, the fire department can't do it, it takes all of us. And so... And with that, you've got your cards, you've got the website. Find somebody that would... you would want to be a firefighter in Urbana, and tell them, come and test. Come to the open house on May 13. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Aaron?
So first of all, I want to thank you all for all of the efforts that you have made to sort of open up this opportunity to make sure that it's reflective of our community. I've had several conversations with at least two of you. I haven't had a chance to talk to Rhonda very much. I was at the breakfast, and certainly I've been talking to quite a few people about the opportunity as firefighters. So I know it's going to take time for us to get to the goal that we want to reach, but it's this type of progressive approach to this that I really appreciate. I think our community will appreciate, and I think it will make an even stronger fire department. I know that we have a great fire department. I know everybody puts their life on the line from just the work that you do. Just, I saw something recently about a fire and just how dangerous it is for the firefighters, and so I certainly appreciate the sacrifice that you all make, and I will be helping in any way that I possibly can to help bring some more diversity to the fire department, and I thank you for all the work that you all are doing to try to make that happen as well.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jared?
Chief, I know you and I haven't had a chance to meet yet, and obviously, looking across the council, I am your target audience, but I'd really be happy to speak with you more about your guys' strategy and how my insight might be able to help.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. You're all invited to the open house on May 13 as well.
All right. Thank you.
I will say I spent about an hour and a half at the event yesterday here at the fire station, the Day in the Life of the Firefighters, that was... and participating in that were the staff from the NICU at Carl Hospital, and as part of a fundraising opportunity, and it was an extremely good experience. And we're going to provide the same orientation experience for city council in the next month or so. So it'll be a good opportunity for council members to understand a little bit more about what life as a firefighter is like, so we're looking forward to that. Thanks.
Okay, we have one more item on the agenda. It's Resolution Number 2017-04-028R, which is a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the Illinois Housing Development Authority Abandoned Property Program. Matt Rager.
So this is a resolution, as Nora mentioned, that is required by the authority that has awarded us the funding through the abandoned properties program. That's the Illinois Housing Development Authority, abbreviated IDA. And the reason this is coming directly to council and not to committee was, we just recently received the program funding agreement, and it's due on this Friday, so there's a very quick turnaround time, but a requirement to participate in and access those funds is a certified resolution. This program is funded actually through foreclosure fee filings that are collected throughout the state of Illinois by IDA, and it's distributed proportionately among various regions throughout the state. The city of Urbana applied to receive a portion of these funds, and it was awarded $71,000, which can be used to alleviate blighted conditions throughout the city and in all of its neighborhoods. So those activities could include demolishing abandoned and blighted structures, securing them, maintaining properties on which abandoned structures had existed, and other eligible activities. And this fits in with the department's goal of investing in all of our neighborhoods and being sure that we're trying to stabilize property values as much as possible, and it also fits directly into the comprehensive plan and the fiscal year 2015-2019 consolidated plan and the activities that we specified in those documents. This activity does allow us to reimburse for previously conducted activities that the city's done over the past two years, and also for future activities that the city anticipates conducting over the next two years. So there... we do expect there to be a mix of both types of reimbursement that would occur. Fiscally, this is money that would be coming from a state agency, so it would not affect the city general fund in any way. It's possible that some of the activities that are done through this program would also use community development block grant funds, which the city receives on an annual basis from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, but otherwise it would not entail any obligations of general funds. The City of Urbana Community Development Commission unanimously recommended that the resolution be forwarded to the Urbana City Council with recommendation for approval at its meeting on April 25, and staff likewise recommends approval. Are there any questions?
Dennis?
One of the issues that came up a couple months ago in my ward was... had to do with trees and brush that was growing in an alleyway, which was... I can't remember, it was a city alleyway. I think it was still a city, or valid city alleyway. And we learned that the individual homeowners who have property facing the alley are responsible for clearing the alley of brush, which seemed kind of surprised to me, because the alley's not really their property, but, you know, they have to be maintained. I know we do maintain our parkways. Would item number two, bullet point number two, trimming of trees or brushes and removal of nuisance brushes and trees be applicable to city alleys?
The funding is restricted to residentially zoned properties, and it's possible that could apply in that instance, but the property would need to be verified as being abandoned, and the program actually has very specific qualifications of what makes a property abandoned. And I'd be glad to talk with you afterwards and try to see, you know, what the situation is, but just off the top of my head, I would think it would probably not qualify as an abandoned property and therefore probably not be eligible for funding under this program.
Any other questions? Maria Alanas?
I just had a quick question. So the only thing that can't be reimbursed are the administrative costs, and it looks like the proposal has items that have been previously spent. So I'm curious, what approximately is the amount of staff time that would be needed to be able to see the whole program through?
It's hard to calculate that exactly, because we haven't worked with this program before. This is our first time receiving these funds, but we also... we do receive funds also through IDA called the Blight Reduction Program, and the staff at IDA is... that's administering this program is the same that's administering the blight reduction program. Many of the forms and processes are the same, so we're hoping that we're able to very efficiently bring this into our current activities and all the grants that we administer, and do that in a very efficient manner, so that staff time isn't overly impacted through administering this grant.
Is there a motion for approval?
I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Aaron. Jim?
For purposes of educating our new council members, this is a resolution to approve an agreement, and therefore, their vote is all that's necessary on this one.
Thank you. No further discussion? We do a roll call or individual... or roll call? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay. Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Marlin?
Oh, typo there.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
And Brown? Oh, no. Who am I missing here? Miller?
Miller, yes.
Sorry.
Thanks, Charlie.
We have a typo.
Okay, that motion is approved. We have one more housekeeping to do before... well, after adjournment, but I'm going to pass out your oaths of office, and I need the council members to sign, and then I'll sign that, and the clerk will sign, and we'll get those back to you next. With no further business being before the council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.[1798.53]
[applause]